The Tuesday, February 23rd, 2015, meeting and public hearing of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeJean?
I am.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I shall move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're not in a rush here, Lindy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, you and Rob are, I guess. Okay, we've adopted that.
Sorry about that. I was anticipating.
Does anyone in the audience have a petition that they would like to discuss of things that are not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no petitioners, we will move on to old business. And our old and pretty much only business for today is to finish up with our capital improvements program, discuss it, and make a recommendation to the city council. So Cindy, would you like to start? I know you sent us great memos, and everybody's read them, I'm sure. Oh, and I want you to know that I spent last night, a good portion of last night, reading all the comments. And I'll tell you, they were very thoughtful. Some of them were funny.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And people really, really were putting it all out there as to what they wanted to see done and not see done. And I thought it was pretty much balanced, too. I know there was a slight difference after you added them up between the schools and the library, but not much. So, that was good.
Chair Rogers and commissioners, I'm glad to be back for your recommendation meeting for CIP, and I appreciate the special meeting and adjustment to a different room. I have up on the screen just the website, so I thought I'd take advantage of showing you the updates. And then I'll go into the two memos. One is the follow-up from the February 17th work session, and then the other would be a recommendation. So this is the enhanced website that we've been talking about in terms of having more community engagement, including the comments from the survey that the chair just mentioned. And so we have listed by meetings all of the documents and videos related, and so people can get to the actual survey and town hall meetings separately. And you can also get to it from the main website here, and then if you go to like tonight's meeting, then you can, it should open up into, it's behaving itself, it's a little slow. It has the full package for tonight, was my point that I was going to show you. So, we've been getting good feedback on this, and we'll be monitoring the metrics and then after the update. But then for tonight's meeting, the public can have access right now to everything that you all have this evening, for the 23rd, the memo, and it cross-references to the videos and the full CIP. So we'll monitor the metrics and have a sense when we get through the CIP process, how many people have viewed this website, and also how many have viewed the videos. So we'll be able to report that out. As it relates, then, to this evening, I'd like to start with the February 20th memo that's subject is the follow-up to the February 17th work session that we had last Tuesday. The planning commission basically had ended up with four questions that were follow-ups. The other items that you raised or directed are in the recommendation memo for tonight. So I just wanted to highlight the follow-up items and see if there were any more questions related to that. One area dealt with getting better understanding and update on the South Washington streetscape improvements in the multimodal plaza. So I've just done a brief summary here on phases one and two, which are still on schedule and in the plan, and basically cover us from Annandale to South Maple, running down South Washington. And it's going to cover undergrounding pedestrian improvements, multimodal plaza, and the free right turn. So that's what the concept plan that's attached and I have on the screen, and can enlarge it as we go. But it goes from Maple Avenue at South Washington all the way up to Annandale and the Hillwood right turn. And so that is very similar to what you all have been seeing, and is now proceeding to 65 percent plans. And this Thursday, actually, we're convening a stakeholder group of businesses in the area of the multimodal plaza, Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation and CATCH members, to talk about the interpretive signage and the art that would be at the intermodal plaza. We need to kind of nail down what that's going to look like direction-wise and design so we can proceed to the engineering for the multimodal.
Do you have a draft of that?
We will by Thursday. I don't have it yet. And so I'm hoping the CATCH planning commission member will be able to attend this meeting, and then I, 1:00 in this room.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to propose that then in April, that if the planning commission's schedule would permit it, I'd like to come back for a work session with the whole planning commission on the intermodal piece, but the whole plan in more detail. I'm proposing April because we'll have this meeting next week, in February, get input, bring one more concept plan back to the stakeholder group, and then would have a draft that we could present to the planning commission for input and feedback. The Phase Three, which is sort of from the left of this concept at Maple, all the way off the map to the city line, is on hold pending Fairfax County's work on their area plan for that area. The supervisor, Smith, is leading for the Providence District, and also will take a lot more work with VDOT. So we want to focus on this key piece tied to the Reserve at Tinnerhill redevelopment and some of our commercial core corridor, and then we'll move back to Phase Three. And so I just wanted to circle back with that because Ms. Teetz, in particular, had raised the question on the big sheet for transportation projects, what had shifted and why.
And is that the only reason we're holding, or we're putting that in Phase Three? It seems to me that that should be in Phase One, since that we're going to need something done there because of that big project and all those people moving in.
Okay, I do, we are doing the South Maple, traffic signal, but the ones to Fairfax County and out by West Marlin and George Mason, those out to the city line are on hold.
But the one there at the Lincoln.
Yeah, so the city will be doing the one at South Maple and Washington, and of course the developer is doing the one at Tinnerhill as part of that project. And then we'll be doing this one and improvements up here at Annandale.
So will the multimodal plaza be part of this Phase One and Two?
Yes, and that's right here at the corner where Hillwood and Washington split, and the hand is on the taxicab building. So the intermodal plaza is here, and then on the other side in front of Coleman Plaza. And we'll be improving the sidewalks, the crosswalk, and making that a traditional intersection. New bus shelter, double, the double width of the bus shelter, that's an improved bus shelter plan, and planting, stormwater, and better crosswalks across Washington and Hillwood.
Okay, the way this is just phrased, it just says to provide space for it as opposed to actually performing it?
Yeah, we'd actually be producing it. And that part is with the federal money, that's on a tight timeline, so the FTA money that we preserved instead of losing for this project. So if the planning commission agrees and your schedule will permit for April, depending on other projects, and Mason Row would like to come back in April and have the key transportation staff with me to update you on that.
What's the timeline on that?
The design will take us most of 2015, and then we start constructing in 2016 and finish in 2017. At the stakeholder meeting on Thursday, we'll have more details on the timeline and actual architect concept plans and materials and colors for people to react to.
Are those different than the ones that we approved before, or that we voted on before?
It's built on the adopted South Washington area concept plan. What we've gotten now down to is where are the traffic signal poles and the traffic box, and where's the trees and the pads, and what color brick, but it mirrors exactly what's adopted in the area plan. So you all have seen the core concept already when you adopted it.
On our funding, transportation special funding spreadsheet, what are the line items that encompass Phase One and Two? Just make sure I'm clear here.
That is in Tab Eight. And they would be in the page one of the big sheet. It's probably the easiest place to find it, and it's under the South Washington Street area. And you'll see monies for the multimodal and the intersections. And those were previously approved funding, so it won't be in your summary sheet because it's prior to FY '16.
Where's the big sheet?
Tab Eight.
Number eight, Tab Eight.
Towards the end, it'll be the folded up one, yeah. So the first top box will show you the projects and the design and the schedule, and that was previously approved CIP money for a total of $6 million. There's $2 million, that's federal and state, as part of the FTA grant, and the other $4 million is VDOT six-year money. Because that was previously in the CIP, it's not in your summary sheet, but you would see it described in Tab One under current projects. And I can find that page number if you want to cross-reference that this evening.
So none of this 5.96 million is on Tab Three dash Three, or on Sheet Three dash Three?
Correct, for this project.
And the South Washington Street POA program is something different?
That would be for...
POA standing for what?
Planning Opportunity Area, so it matches your downtown plan. There's some accounting changes where we had to reallocate it to the right project, but it's not new dollars.
There are three entries for South Washington POA program. I see one for $0, one for $400,000, and one for negative $320,000.
Yeah, those are purple.
That sounds like $80,000 difference.
Those are purple, which means we're reprogramming money from existing accounting accounts to different ones, so that we have them in this umbrella project for the South Washington POA, so it's not new dollars. And so one of them is $400,000 from a project that we didn't need, and then some was allocated in different subs. And in order for me not to misstate those, let me go to the project page, and I'll tell you what page number. South Washington area opportunity area starts on Eight dash Nine. And on Eight dash Ten, you can see how we moved some money around, and then the description gives you notes. It's a lot of detailed accounting to get it allocated to the right projects and the types. In the future, we're starting to do this so it's in the POA broader categories, and so it's more flexible, and we don't have to do, come back and move from one project to another. Because what we find is sometimes an intersection and a traffic signal needs a certain amount of money, and we had an early preliminary amount of money, and it wasn't enough. The others, something else didn't need as much, and then we're having to come back to you to do a formal transfer. So we're going to start doing more of an umbrella fund for these opportunity areas to implement your area plans. So Russ, I don't know if I've pointed you to enough places that you could sort of track our accounting move, but some of the money also went into other projects, which is why one goes down $320, another goes up $400. It's adjusted in the pedestrian plan, I believe. So it's not really short, $80,000.
I think I got it. Come back to me, I want to do some math here real quick.
As you do that math, I'll just draw you to traffic signals on Eight dash Five, because that's where we also moved some of the other money. You'll see negative $120.
So that's for that one. For that one at Maple?
We have verified the math, it all balances back out, but this is also why we don't want to have to set up this level of detailed accounting for you all to have to review each time. I will go back to the FY '17 follow-up work session, and then we can come back to that question or others. On question two noted on that memo, there were some questions about how the downtown reinvestment project scope would be finalized and what the planning commission's role will be. And so as part of an update, the staff actually met last week to review all of the comments that we have received and are working to refine a project scope and a cost that kind of incorporates all the comments from VEPIS Chamber and the impacted businesses from the January 9th meeting. And then that will be presented in the city manager's proposed budget, because it's coming up on March 9th, so then we can get it out to the public, and then we'll do some communication and process review of that during that budget process. And that would include coming back, circling back to the planning commission for a more formal presentation on it, not just what's in, why it's proposed budget. And so in this memo, I proposed coming back in March, if we can work it with your schedule so that that occurs before council adopts the budget. Now, it may have to be end of March, early April, but it would be before April 27th.
Yeah, one of my concerns about that was that it would get into the budget without formal review by the planning commission and Architectural Advisory Board for design.
For design, sorry. And I would hate for that to just be in there with the money available for whatever people's whims were that month or that year.
Yep. So we will circle back with the planning commission. Right now, everything that we're looking at would not require a site plan, it would not require a 2232 review, because we're working within existing infrastructure. But certainly, you know, narrowing down the intersections, the ped heads, the curb and gutters, we'll circle back, brick sidewalks, what we're going to fix, so everybody can concur on the prioritization.
From what I've seen on that design, it, oh, never mind, we won't go into that, since you said we're going to see it.
Yeah, so if that will work with the planning commission, we'll work with Jim and staff to come back in March for that. Mr. Collins is working on refining those cost numbers. I see he's sitting behind me now. For question number three, there was an FY '15, the budget approved $250,000 for the Joint Steering Committee work up with the land on the boundary line adjustment by the high school and middle school, and economic development opportunities. So the planning commission had asked how much of that $250,000 had been spent. So Page Two of the memo provides you an accounting of that. Basically, it's just under $65,000. They're finalizing an RFP to go out to get some additional consulting services, to work on the economic development component of that. And at this point, the city manager doesn't have an estimate for what that will be, and so anticipates significant more money will be spent during this fiscal year, but we don't have a dollar amount for that.
Right. And on the $25,330 for the ULI TAP and consulting services, it seems to me that there was only maybe $750 spent on the TAP?
Yeah.
And so the rest is for consulting?
It's a mix. The $7,500 that you're speaking to was the match to the ULI TAP grant. So the grant was $15,000, and ULI provided $7,500, the city provided $7,500. We did cover food costs, hotel costs, copying costs, some of the ancillary to that, and then the work with Ms. Susan Bell for the consulting services to date.
Okay.
Is included in that. So that's how it got up to the $25,000. But you were correct, the $7,500 was the specific dollar amount for the TAP grant.
There was quite a few audiovisual things in there.
Yeah.
I mean, that was a highly...
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying that it was too much, but I knew it wasn't $39,000. Oh, no, $25,000.
Yeah, and to confirm some of the, you know, discussion we had last time on the confusion of the dollar amount, the total amount was estimated at $60,000 at the last meeting, it's $64,700. And clearly, that's for all components of the project, just not the TAP component.
Okay.
And the fourth question was about the land proceeds, because we were looking at the Big Chimneys transportation, land proceeds set aside of $1 million. And so the total amount from the post office and EDA lot sale was $4.4 million, and the city portion, EDA portion, is broken out. For you all, last week, I had it split, because I thought the EDA's was slightly larger, the city's was slightly larger dollar amount. And then it's been allocated $1 million for the Big Chimneys transportation project, and $1.75 was in last year's CIP for the pay-as-you-go items we had there. And then the rest is being allocated throughout the FY '16 from the Capital Reserve. The bullets don't totally add up to the total because I forgot to put a line item for the mailbox land proceeds, and so the $300,000 difference was from the mailbox land proceeds. So all of those land assets have been deployed, or planned to be deployed, into the capital program.
And that $1 million is being set aside for Big Chimneys transportation. That doesn't include the proffer that came from the Rushmark project?
Correct.
It does not?
It does not.
Right, okay.
So that would be, they're required to do the transportation assessment and up to $100,000 improvements as a result of their post-project fully operational study. And so we have left the $1 million...
Did you say the transportation improvements? I thought it was supposed to go to Big Chimneys Park.
They have Big Chimneys, and they also have to do a study to see if what they plan for transportation hasn't done.
And that's going to take up, and they've only done $100,000 for both of those things?
I believe so. And that's why we've recommended, and you all in council adopted last year, additional monies for any impacts from that development.
Right.
With the primary focus being targeted to Big Chimneys, assuming that we'll have other transportation resources.
I thought it was more for grading over Big Chimneys, but I guess it's for transportation, huh?
It's written for transportation or Big Chimneys, but you all specifically had the project worded that the priority would be for Big Chimneys.
I remember that.
But it would be grading, it would be park amenities, it would be the master plan improvements.
We deliberately did that. Yeah, I do remember that. That's why I was wondering why I kept saying transportation.
And renamed it, so it says Big Chimneys slash Transportation.
But I'm sure, again, that's not going to be for a while that's being put off.
Right.
It would be in FY '18, so that it would time after the project is fully up and running, and we see the impact to the surrounding neighborhood.
Any further questions on questions two, three, and four?
The Million Eight?
The EDA.
Oh.
The EDA is using it for their grant programs and things that they need to fund.
Expand on that.
Well, they have a grant program, so like people like, the Tinnerhill Blues Festival can get a grant or different groups.
Or watch night.
And then they've spent money on consultants, like they've spent money on consultants for their downtown park idea, so that was money out of that fund. That's basically it.
And then they're looking at land banking policy and opportunities to use their funding that way.
Right. So I guess it's land bank, they've been talking about, I think that, didn't they finish their policy for land banking?
Yes.
So what they're looking for is opportunities for land banking as well.
Yeah, the policy is done as far as I know, but they're, you know, still just kind of waffling around what to do with it.
That's a lot of money for a grant program.
No, it's not strictly for grant.
Yeah, the majority of their grants...
It's grants and funding for consultants when they need it, and for land banking.
That's a lot of consultants.
And for land banking.
It's a lot of money, Million Eight's a lot of money in most people's neighborhood.
Yeah.
I think the primary focus is for land banking, a big project. For their grant program, a lot of the funds for the grants come from their administrative fees earned off of the bonds they've issued in the past as well.
And I think this is for a long-range type of situation, and not planning on all this in, you know, use it all one year or anything like that. It's money to manage the different programs they want to go through.
I think they plan to use this money over multiple, multiple years, unless they can find good property to buy for land banking.
Okay.
Russ, are you ready to go back to question one, or no? We can come back to it.
The part I'm just curious about is the, when you're reallocating money, reprogramming it, I should say, I just don't see where all the offsets are coming. I see that the $400,000 has been offset, but the $320,000, that number, I don't see how that got reprogrammed unless it's added to some other figure.
It is added to another project. We don't have James and Paul here, so you and I are probably in the same boat, Mike. We're looking at, Paul is upstairs at council, we'll see where he is in his presentations. He's working to sort out these purples, where 320 and 400.
But is it within the same project?
And I know, well, no, some of it, I think, went to the traffic signals and the bridges.
Yeah, I mean, those numbers are close.
Yeah.
The $400,000, you can follow really quite easily.
Some of them crossed into other projects. If you don't mind holding, we'll see if Paul will be able to be at a breakpoint between his two items upstairs, and we'll be able to answer that. I've walked through it in detail with staff, and I'm afraid I can't pull it out.
Yeah, no problem.
So with that, we'll just make a note to come back to that one, and Chair, if you like, we can move to the recommendation memo dated February 23rd, which will summarize what the commission has done to date, the changes.
Do we have that, did we get that in hard copy?
Yes.
I just have the one that says "draft."
Was that the...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure. The sheet that, actually, this is the sheet that Russ has...
It's okay.
I have a regular paperclip.
There haven't been any changes to this, right?
Minor edits, but no. So you should have a cover memo that is eight pages long. Then you'll have the updated spreadsheets based on the changes that you would have in front of you, what is referenced in the motion.
I don't have that.
Well, it's five pages because we took the motions out. It's a memo that has the pie charts.
It's underneath here.
Okay, I think we found it.
There's an actual... That's part of it.
Okay.
And I think it must be another part.
I think she found it.
It's this, it's with this.
Oh, I got it, got it, got it, got it.
It just came apart in your pile.
Mine's five pages.
Yeah, I forgot I took the motions out and separated it.
You got them all?
Cindy, I'm a big fan of this new 3.6, Three dash Six.
Excellent.
The big sheet. This is exactly what I was looking for. It isolates what the big projects are quite easily, so thank you.
Good. I'm glad it met what your request was, because it was specifically created to the one you'd asked for, so it's good to know. And I owe thanks to Mr. LaConde for helping me recategorize. So you'll have the memo and four attachments. Attachment one is Pages Three One, Three Two, Three Three, and the Three Six that Mr. Wodisca was just referencing, and the Stormwater through Three Seven. Three Four is attached... 3-4 is attachment two, which is the fund balance policies. And then you have the updated project sheets based on the changes that we made to the facility reinvestment and the parking structure, which I'll highlight those changes for the commission. The memo itself is the formal transmission of the process, your authority to do the CIP. And so that's noted starting on page one, the definition of the CIP as being a project greater than 150,000, a useful life of five years, unless it's going to be debt financed and then it needs a useful life of 10. The city charter and code sections are referenced that refer to the responsibility of the Planning Commission to review the capital improvements projects, to ensure consistency with the comp plan, and also make sure there's a financial plan associated with it and that the city manager or his designees to work with you all to prepare that. And then he shall transmit it to the council when he presents his operating budget. And that will be on March 9th. On page two, I also highlighted the meetings that the Planning Commission has held, both as work sessions and public hearings, as well as the increased community engagement endeavors that the Planning Commission helped develop and request related to the survey, the town hall meeting, the videos, and the website enhancements. On page two, towards the middle, I've noted the five areas that the Planning Commission had made amendments to the CIP as I presented it, from what I presented on February 2nd. The first would be to separate out the high school and middle school funding instead of it all being in 104.5 million in FY17 for the two projects. So I've put up on the screen the revised sheet that you also have in your memo for the 3-1. So right now you'll see the high school construction. And this would be intended for both Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason early, preliminary concept plan drawings, preliminary cost estimates, preliminary architectural work. So that information could be prepared for the community to know what the projects would be, be prepared for referendum, and could really truth test what the project costs would be. So this is split up for FY17 for 5 million and then the rest of the construction costs in 18. Now, we actually probably still would split that up further when we go to issue the bonds. We wouldn't issue it all in one. But after talking to the superintendent, she was understanding of the discussion of the Planning Commission and willing to work with us to break it up this way without breaking it up any further because there could be a PPA or some other thing come in that could accelerate it. But my hope would be this helps message that it's not all going to be constructed and delivered in FY17, that there has to be a planning process, but still keeps a focus on let's keep this ball moving with the focus starting in FY17. I will highlight, however, it is still in my infamous pink, which means it's only if there is a financing plan. So as this progresses with the Joint Steering Committee, how we're going to fund the 5 million and the rest of the construction costs has to be refined.
So you anticipated my question, but you didn't answer it. What is the pre-referendum cost? 5 million?
No, it's probably significantly less. This would include referendum concept plans, preliminary engineering, and costing out. And the school board and the superintendent had not broken it out to that level of detail, so.
Well, so wouldn't it be more helpful if it were pre-referendum and post-referendum or no?
There's probably a yes and no to that in that it could be messaged and communicated either way. But if they were to proceed with this, they would want more than just money to get it to referendum. They would want to be able, because of the budget cycle and potential timing, if it passed, to still have money approved to proceed. But the bottom line is there's still no revenue associated behind this project until more work is done with the Joint Steering Committee.
Well, but wouldn't you want to know as a taxpayer what was spent in order to take it to the referendum?
And from an accounting standpoint, if this is approved and money is actually available, then that yes could be broken down. But generally, for the CIP projects, within your project sheets, you'll know how much is A&E in construction, but we don't at this level break it down that granular.
Yeah, but those placeholder numbers drive us crazy every year. And this seems to be another case study in this, and I don't want to hold this up. But it seems to me like you would want to know that it's going to cost, you know, a couple of million dollars before you have anyone's, you have the voters even weighing in on it.
Well, this is a very large project, so it's not totally apples to apples. But when Mount Daniel project was approved, 1 million was in the first year and the 14.6 was subsequent. And part of that 1 million was spent doing the concept plan and the development information for the taxpayers to know what they were voting on. And then the money was already appropriated. And so once the referendum passed, they could proceed into more detailed architectural plans and engineering.
Russ, you had a great explanation for that.
All right.
Rob, at least we have a new color for it. So now we really know it's a placeholder because it's pink, okay?
Well, okay, fine, all right.
Rob, this was a sort of, I think, born out of a conversation we had last week, which was to say, there was a growing sentiment among the commission that this project wasn't going to happen to FY18.
At the earliest.
At the earliest. So, but the school board was pushing for FY17. So we said, let's put a little bit of money so they could do some preliminary work, some architecture and engineering, and show that there's still some urgency so this doesn't just get pushed back a whole nother year. Sort of acknowledge that there needs to be some pressure put on from a budgetary standpoint that let's try to move for 17, but realistically, it's not going to make it to 18. So this was sort of our attempt at that. Here's some money there, but really it's going to be in 18.
Got it. Thank you.
But there's really no money. It's pink.
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't here.
I'm sorry you weren't here.
Wait till next year's memo.
And when we look at attachment four, you'll see that at the Planning Commission's request, this is broken out as a separate motion. So there's one motion for everything except for the Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason High School projects. So that Planning Commission could have a further deliberation or a different vote on that versus the whole, based on how you all reacted to how this looked when it broke out. The turf field and track projects are not unchanged, but I did highlight them that they are the Planning Commission's request proceeding in FY16 due to the safety nature and use of those fields that is with the water sale proceeds. Planning Commission did request that the public parking structure on 313 Park Avenue be started a year earlier. So I have moved up, as you'll see here in blue, the 1 million A&E for FY17 and then construction plan for 18, which would be one year prior to the library construction, which could give us some staging and parking for the library in the meantime, plus public parking. And then item four on the memo is a itemization of the discussion the Planning Commission had on the importance of establishing capital reserves for facilities and equipment so that in the future, all facilities aren't lumped up in a crisis mode again. And so I have an attachment four. You'll see a separate motion where I tried to capture that intent so that Planning Commission can vote on that or edit it if you so wish before voting. And I think last year, when you did have two intention motions as well, council, the community paid attention to, it's not just approving the projects, but some other policy mentioned. So that's therefore the Planning Commission's consideration. As is item five, a separate motion on the City Hall project, which you had in your CIP adoption last year. And this one will specifically reference the four add-on projects consistent with the task force recommendation. And then the final part of this memo then highlights a summary of the projects in terms of how many projects are in the general fund, the transportation fund. It highlights the first use of the water sale proceeds, about 6 million out of 11.3 for capital investment. It does leave 5.1 unallocated in the reserves from the water sale proceeds fund for future projects. And also, it does highlight that in general fund, school, and transportation, there is quite a few projects in the green coloration, which will refer to, they will only be funded if there's grant or revenue offset. They itemized critical needs for the community, but they are not funded. And it's a way to keep it on the radar screen for discussion as we deal with the complexities of capital and operating budgets. The last thing I wanted to highlight is that in reviewing this before presenting to you all tonight, we found one formula where 66,000 wasn't adjusted out of previously. And that's from old Q scab school debt service payments, the 186 divided by three. And so when we pulled that out, it created a whopping 66 extra thousand dollars for the capital reserve. And so since the facility reinvestment in yellow on the screen and the schools' modernization were both lower significantly than had been requested, I split the 66,000 between those two projects and put a little bit more into facility reinvestments. It still results in your fund balance being zero at the end of the FY18. And that's with the million dollars that's set aside for Big Chimneys, assuming to be spent in FY18. 66,000 was so small in terms of the needs, it didn't make sense leaving it in the capital reserve when we knew we had unmet needs. So that would be the changes. And then attachment four would be the summary of the four motions that staff is recommending for approval by the Planning Commission.
Okay, Cindy, before we go to that, I'd like to revisit just one more time the breakdown of the school financing plan and the 5 million pulled out for 2017. Can you explain to me, if we're not actually going to put this in the budget, unless there's some other kind of funding for it, how are they going to spend the money to do a referendum?
They will not be able to do that until we come up with a funding source that would then be included in the CIP update next year. So FY16 is what's appropriated and there's money behind it. 17 to 20 are your planning.
Yeah, I understand that.
So there's no money to spend until we find a way to turn pink into
Into white.
White debt.
And that makes sense because you wouldn't spend money on a referendum if you didn't think we could get to rest that 94 million dollars.
Right.
The committee's working on it.
Well, you're on...
I'm asking that because I'm on the committee and I would like to know.
So in the meantime...
I'd like to know what we're doing.
Well, I think, I mean, what I get from is they won't get that 5 million even just for the beginning planning unless there's a funding source.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just don't see a funding source out there hovering around.
You got a year to figure it out.
Thank you. Our work is cut out for us.
Nothing to happen, but for example, this time next year, I mean, it doesn't sound like these guys would go for it, but we could put some money in the CIP in white even before a funding source has been identified if it seemed like at that time we wanted to start doing some planning, right? I mean, every year we updated.
It just seems to me that we're always thinking that there's going to be some outside money coming in.
And I'm not, like, I wouldn't be against it if we knew what the pink funding was going to be. But there's no point in putting money to it until we know what's going on.
Absolutely. And nothing's going to happen next year anyway, so.
Right. They've got a year to figure, a year and a half to figure it out.
Yeah, so it's a tax rate and the debt service policy accommodated.
That is a good committee.
You could have white, which is debt service, to do some preliminary planning.
It's a crackerjack committee.
In the meantime, the Joint Steering Committee will continue to work with the resources they have, which is the balance of the 250,000, to get a better plan and strategy in place, which is the goal of the next RFP. And to see if we need a PPA and RFI or what sort of the next step should be. And who knows, an unsolicited PPA can always come in from a developer also.
We'll be looking for that.
One of the ways I look at it is that at least we've got something in there that's saying yes. You know, if there's funding ready, then we've got it. Like I said before, the CIP, I'm seeing it more and more as telling a story of how we're planning things and how we're getting to, you know, how we're getting to following the projects and everything. And I think that's important to have it there, not just that one big lump sum that people say, oh, look at that, it's there. And then if we had anything to do in 17, they say, whoa, it's not there.
Right. I'd just like it, if we're telling a story, we just don't want to tell a fairy story.
No, but we know it's pink.
Yeah, yeah.
So let me ask the question about the 5 million again. It's, if there's no funding source identified for this, does it get shifted to another year? Or do we just say, okay, there's no funding source identified, so we're not going to do any preliminary work for the schools?
Well, I think the schools are continuing to do some preliminary work within the, they may have in the operating budget and the balance of the 250,000. So it won't go dead stop. But in terms of actually producing concept plans and preliminary costs and some, you know, 10% or 20% architectural, there's no funding.
Because I think 5 million is a lot of money for just doing conceptual work for a year. I don't think we can produce...
They probably don't need more than a million.
Yeah, I don't think they need...
But the superintendent requested more so that if it was actually funded and the referendum passed, there would be the expectation, because there was a pot of money there, that the work would immediately proceed. But certainly, 5 million is way more than what they would need to prepare for a referendum.
And it wouldn't go anywhere because it's not real.
Can I just ask a quick question on the utility fund? That's the Stormwater and Sewer. So I know the six vital projects. Are those, so does that mean that once the CIP is through the city council, those six are on and going?
Right. So if you look...
They aren't subject to change once the CIP is approved or?
Correct, because they would be approved by the projects that are in 3-7, which is in your memo.
Yeah.
So you would, and Mr. Collins can answer any more specific questions than I can. But under the sewer, you have two that are capacity projects, our share of the capital improvements with Arlington and Alexandria. There's out-year money set aside for improving our wastewater treatment capacity, pending on future expansion, redevelopments in the city. The specific project that will be sort of construction in the ground in the city is the sewer rehab, the relining of our old lines.
Okay.
And the same would be true for Stormwater. It'll be the reinvestment projects.
Right.
So they would be adopted and proceeding.
Right. But those are the six. It's not a, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, one further question from me. After reading all those comments from the survey, I started looking through all these papers to see where one of the things that were mentioned very frequently in there, where it was, if it is in the CIP. I think it is not in the CIP, and that is sidewalks. It seemed to me that I would say a third of the comments were commenting on sidewalks and lack of, or needing to repair or doing something like that. And as I looked through here, I wasn't finding it. Is there anything in this transportation budget for sidewalks?
There's not the maintenance fixed piece that some comments were talking about, and that would be a Public Works Ops operating budget challenge.
Well, there were, yeah, but there were also, you know, need sidewalks on both sides of the streets or just on one side or...
Yeah. So from that regard, the South Washington Streetscape POA is going to have a lot of sidewalk improvements, undergrounding and widening. So you have some sidewalks under there. You also have under pedestrian access program on 3-3, you'll see, that's actually where quite a bit of our purple reprogram money is. We do have funding that we can do, intersection improvements, sidewalk improvements related to pedestrian access. So there is money there. to pedestrian access, so there is money there. But we don't have a project that's called just sidewalks, so it's within targeted areas.
Pedestrian, or Safe Schools or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Safe Schools was a specific funding source, very targeted to that.
Right.
So I would say there's quite a few that would cover sidewalks, but it's not a standalone infrastructure project.
Just think, I'll have to answer some questions on that, so I want to be prepared.
Just specifically talk about sidewalks.
Yeah.
There's a lot of comments on undergrounding also, and that would be through some of the POAs and things like that.
You know, I think this is one of the most valuable hunks of information we've got. This is real, was really great with all the comments. And showed both needs, but also showed the disinformation, or just people are not understanding how, you know, things work. So it offers a great opportunity to go ahead somehow and address a lot of the sense that so many people did take the time to make really some excellent replies. It was, I found it really fascinating. And I think it'd be great for retreat material. I think it'd be, certainly, I hope that the city council will consider the information in that for future policies and everything.
Will they, will city council be getting that information?
Yes, city council gets a complete update to the CIP notebook, as you do, so every time there's an update, we update their notebook also.
So they already have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we go to the motions, if I could go back to tab eight and try to respond to some of Russ's questions. Paul is, remains busy upstairs with council on the parks chapter for the comp plan and the neighborhood traffic calming program. So if you look at the tab eight, 8-1, the first one is bridges. And this is a bit of tracking, and if you want afterwards, Russ, we can give you a summary, and I'll share it with all of planning commission. But you'll see that, for example, on bridges, 125,000 is being reallocated from South Washington to this project. And when you go to pavement, you will see that money is being reallocated from pavement to South Washington. And so, we could go through, when you go to traffic signals, we have the sign project being reallocated to pedestrian accessibility. So if it would be helpful, we could do a summary chart, because I know the transportation staff have done that, so that it all balanced out at the end. If you would like a summary accounting, we could do that.
If we're looking at 8.1, can you walk me through where you think the money is being reallocated, just so I understand how to read this chart?
Sure. So if you're on page 8-2, which is where all the allocations are, and there's a funding source, MVTA 30%, FY '16, 125,000. If you look at footnote two, which is then under description, you'll see existing funds reallocated from South Washington, 30% program over. And so.
So the 125 from, so this came from the, the South Washington Street POA, and is going to be applied to bridges here. I mean, these projects, I'm curious to follow the chart, but these projects are of less concern since it's all grant funded. I'm not as worried about them, but.
Everything we're reallocating is grant or already approved grant match.
All right, but it was harder to follow on the chart where the money was coming in and coming out, and it's, it's still hard. Now I have to read footnotes and see where it came from and went to, but like I said, I'm not too worried about these projects. All right, okay, so on the footnotes, that's the answer.
And hopefully, we will be simplifying this, so planning commissioners in the community don't have to track it, which is why we're kind of going to these umbrella funds, so that we're not doing this, having to move it when we have some residual money left or new costs come in higher than originally planned.
Cindy, I think you answered several times, but I just want to confirm. So you talked to superintendent, she was fine with both splitting the high school and middle school money and shifting the bulk of it back by a year?
Correct, I did speak to the superintendent. Now, obviously, the school board has not met as a corporate body to take any formal action, but she concurred this before I put it in.
All right, thanks.
She did want to make it clear that any planning money would be used for both high school and middle school, because it would be joint as we discussed.
So does that take care of your concerns?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fine. Yeah, that's why, if the superintendent thinks that this, you know, she's happy with that approach, then I'm fine with that. Well, so, I'm okay with that motion.
I've got a question on that, too.
Okay, Lyndy, what?
Was it the original, okay, was the original, the 94.5 plus the 10,000? Or was the original the 94.5, 100,000, 5 million?
I'm sorry, I'm saying thousands like Ruth did last week.
The millions, the original George Mason High School, that's now in two years, the school board had adopted it at 99.5 million in FY '17. And the 5 million for Mariellen Henderson in FY '17.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Dollars, all the same, it's just split up.
5 million. It's a wonder we can find anything in the West.
Originally FY '17, now in '18.
Okay, just for the record.
Yes.
This is a lovely thing to have, the students, but this is not what I had in mind. So, as you know, if you're an owner of stocks, past performance does not guarantee future performance. So this is excellent and showing the historical trends in the different developments and property types within the city. However, it would be amazing to me if we're actually about to spend 104 million dollars, and this is the data we have on the demographics and the growth of the schools. That would be shocking. So I'm sure that they must have more demographic information as to continued growth in whether it's townhouses, whether it's single-family houses. So I love this, I guess, but I think what everybody wants to know is what's the projected growth in 2020, 2021? And although they have studies that they always quote and allude to, we have yet to see them three years on.
I will follow back up with the superintendent and request for some additional trending and projections going forward on housing types. I do know, for example, in tab six, in their school board adopted, they have the enrollment birth rate model, so they've given you some projections that way, and I'm sure they've done some projections building out for their schools, so I will.
But if you look at that enrollment birth rate level, as of, for example, it uses the commonwealth of Virginia as one of the studies, which I find impossible to believe is their only source of data. Again, if we're about to spend 104 million dollars, I'm sure they've done more work than this.
And we'll have it in time for our next CIP, maybe.
Maybe. Bruce and Rob, there was another legal side sheet that was handed out at the informational meeting on the school budget Thursday night over at the forum.
Okay.
I don't know if that gave more or not.
I'll follow up with the superintendent, because I didn't, wasn't at that meeting, to see what was distributed.
Well, I do want to point out that in section six on public facilities, at the tail end of what the school provided, like, starting on sex, tab 629, they have projections for each school out to 2930. So it starts with the year 14, 15, and goes to 2930. So that, there is some more detail in there.
And I'm not saying that, I, you know, I can't vouch for how they put this data together, but they do actually have projections that are showing their capacity issues, so.
6-29 is the start, and so that is their projections. I don't know the data sources behind it.
Yeah, and it's excellent, and as is this, it's excellent, but it just doesn't say where they, I mean, they have the lovely blue with the color and the bars. I'm just curious where, where those numbers are coming from.
Well, when, when the superintendent came, she did talk about the sources for this data. She gave us several companies that she uses.
It's the Weldon Cooper study, but you'll notice it's not footnoted, so it's just, all they've done is take the historical growth rate and modeled it forward, which is fine. I just like a little more data than that is, I think everyone would.
Yeah, I think it was, it was also.
See, look, actually, where did they get this from? It's just what the numbers were in the past.
I don't, I mean, I agree, we should get more info. I think Dr. Jones would say that, that it's, that Weldon Cooper has projected that, not just taking a straight line.
But, but, so, if you read the Washington Business Review, you read Delta Associates, they always say, we think there will be this amount of apartments built in the area, and so the population will grow, the job growth will be this, and there's a matrix between those numbers.
Yeah.
All this is, is just the blue line. Lovely.
But I, I just, you know, I can't repeat everything she said, but I do know they were looking at growth rates in the region, in Arlington, in Fairfax, looking forward to what kind of development we were suggesting, based on, on our area plans, where we do have some mixed-use spaces still left.
They don't reference that.
I know they don't, and that, you're right, that's the biggest mistake here, is that they don't put all the references to the data. But she also said that some of it came internally, because Mr. Kimble does his own projections.
The Kimble model.
So they do, they do internal, and then they get an external, and then they look at them together. Okay, and.
And I can talk to her about footnoting and additional data. Certainly, the Weldon Cooper, she was clear, does the birth rate projections, but then they have to put on top of it our small locality, our developments, and other trends that they are anticipating to project forward.
And I want to say, I share.
You know, if you have a stock and you do this with the stock, the SEC actually can put you in jail.
I believe it. And I would, and I'm going to say, like, I just.
This is a federal crime.
I just want to be.
Yeah, no, but it just, because it grew this amount in the past, it's going to keep doing it.
You can look at the graph and say that that's how they came for it.
I don't.
I'm saying, that, that's, that's, that's not necessarily a logical conclusion, but looking at the graph.
I just like to know.
There's all kinds of formulas that could create a graph.
At this point, I'd really, like, three years ago, I kind of wanted to know.
Now you're dying to know.
I really want to know.
Now you might even go to a school board meeting to find out.
I don't disagree with you, because I know a lot of our growth in students has come out of single-family homes, and there is a limit to how many single-family homes that can be built in a city. So at some point, you know, other than turnover, but we've had it, like, my street, when we moved in, there were like two houses with kids, now most of them have kids, and we're pretty much done now. So, but, but I just, you know, I just wanted to at least state that she did state they had sources. She explained how they got the data. She did not footnote it, but it isn't, it wasn't just put in front of us without any explanation.
I think we're capable of seeing a little bit of the raw data without, I don't think it'll hurt us, and I think we could look at it.
Well, I think, really, this is raw data. This sheet is raw data.
Yes, I'm happy for this.
Yep.
Straight up data.
Actually, this is like an accomplishment to see that. I like, I feel so happy getting this. But I don't think it's all of it.
They've given it out before, but, but anyway, I think this is raw data right here. And, and, but it gives you, it does give you an opportunity to look at the amount of units in all these different locations. And you can see that the numbers have gone up and down over time in some of them, but some of them are consistently going up, so that would suggest that there is a trend going on there. So I, I get what you're saying, I just, I just wanted to be fair to the school's presentation. They did come in and talk through their sources. And, you know, I do think there's a limit to some of the, the rises in students, especially for single-family homes.
Well, and so, where I would go with this, as this gets further along and we get into the 104 million. So you picked up seven kids from the Marriott Suites, where heretofore that had been?
Zero.
Zero. So it was built, long after it was built, it was zero for a number of years, and then all of a sudden, it's seven in 2015. Is that a trend? Is that, I mean, like, is that going to be the case in the future? I mean, I'd just like to know where they're getting some of that.
Well, also, I'd like to know is, I thought at one point that extended stay facilities were not allowed to have kids in the schools. And that's one of the things they're telling us about this Mason Row extended stay facility.
I think those, those children, I think is something to find out about, but I think it's a special situation.
Well, I know in 2014, when, after the derecho, some of those kids were actually, because their house got destroyed by the derecho, and while it was being rebuilt, they were staying at the Marriott, because I know one family had three kids there for that.
Right.
There were a lot of.
And some of them are, are, you know, really under all kinds of programs, and therefore, because there was quite a few that, for a while, living at Stratford.
Right.
All right. That's it for this year on that topic.
Well, I will pass on the request to the superintendent and maybe give you some multiple years, because I know they have data where you can see a dip on the sort of generational shift as kids move up and move out.
But one of the things I do like about that paper is on the back, the total number of kids from new projects. What we need to do is also compare it to, you know, all the info we have on how much we predicted at each of those, because this is the one piece that's always argued about, that we're bringing so many. Oh, that's, okay, then that's the one.
That needs to be updated, but, and since you brought it up, Lyndy, I think that's very interesting and true, and I think one of the things people will look at and see the 120 students at Pearson, which is a big jump over last year, but I think it's been determined that most of those people came from Oakwood. You see a big dip from Oakwood over the year, so.
Right.
It is, I think it's super valuable to look at this when you consider future, future projects, but I also think it, you got to read into, into the numbers a little bit more.
But Oakwood and Pearson Square are outlier, well, not Oakwood, but Pearson Square is an outlier on that situation. But just for the simple fact that it shows that, you know, if we consider moderating the, the numbers at Pearson Square, then we are right on target with what we felt would be, and we don't have these huge numbers coming in. Everybody says, oh, we're getting all these kids from, but if you look at some of the things that are around, that have been around forever, those numbers are going up.
Yeah, that's the real, the real impact of the older apartment buildings.
You know, I'd love to get this out, publicized somewhere.
Well, and Pearson, if it, that, that estimate was based on it being a condo building, and so.
Right.
If it had remained condo, it would have been different, and Oakwood.
I know.
Literally, Oakwood was renting out most of that building for, during their rehabilitation of their buildings.
Okay. So it's a different situation. Well, that's not moving us along here, so.
Sorry.
Are we ready? Are you ready for us to move on to the motion, or do you have some other things you want to tell us before we do that?
I have covered everything. I was just going to draw your attention to the motion, Attachment 4. The first four on page one are the staff recommended for approval, but I've given you options on page two, that if you wanted to modify anything, you have text to start from, or if you were to deny the CIP, then the motion for that with the requirement to justify and explain why you were denying it.
Okay.
With that, I'll be glad for any other questions or direction from the commission.
All right, well, before we go on to the motion, and I think now.
I have several questions.
Because we've seen that there's a consensus among the commission that we don't need to break out the, the George Mason, Mariellen Henderson, since there was a compromise on our charts. I'd like to open the meeting to the public, in case anyone has anything to comment on about the CIP project.
And we have set up a microphone for the public, since we're not in our normal meeting location.
I don't have any speaker slips, but if anyone is here who would like to speak on any of the subjects that we've discussed within the CIP.
Do you want to include the library in that?
It's in there.
Are you talking only school?
No, no, we're talking about the CIP totally, so if you want to speak on the library, we'd be happy to hear you.
And?
No, it's you.
Well, I'm Chet DeLong, the library board, and I would like to stress only two things. The board is concerned about the shape of the building and how soon we are going to be able to accommodate a renovation, because if we don't do it in the relatively near future, we're going to be stuck with some immediate costs for having to do it. The second thing that I want to say is that the board, as a whole, is committed to the project that you have before you now. And. project that you have before you now, and we will continue to do due diligence on the Mason Row project, but right now, we're committed to this project. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. DeLong. Any questions of Mr. DeLong?
I think we agree.
I think, I think we agree. Yes, go ahead.
So right now, Mr. DeLong, it is slated to receive $1 million in fiscal year 2018, and 7.3 million in fiscal year 2019. What's the board's position about that timing? That time, the timing of that, is fiscal year 2018 soon enough, not soon enough?
That's probably going to be as soon as we can get to it, because we have a lot of work to do to go to a referendum for that money.
So that timing, as it's presented here, is acceptable?
Seems reasonable.
Reasonable, okay.
And is it acceptable to the library board that the, I know it's, it's not part of your project, but it certainly impacts your project, are moving the funding for, or the preliminary funding for the parking facility up one year?
We're of two minds about how to handle that, because of course, we'd like to keep that separate from our costing.
It is separate.
But, but certainly, we would really appreciate having parking there for the, for not just the library, but for that whole central area, which is so difficult to find parking in.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just one comment, question, or maybe a comment. I was just wondering about the timing of the, the funding for the library itself, and just, I know you guys are committed to having that expansion take place, and I was thinking that doesn't really make sense, if that funding is approved, you move forward with renovations, Mason Row is not going to be, I don't think it's going to be a project that's going to start in the next three years or so. So, why do we even have you doing feasibility studies on moving the library to Mason, to, to that project that's, that we don't even know is going to come to fruition? Isn't that a waste of the library board's time and money? It's just a question that I'm throwing out there, and...
I'm not quite sure what your question is.
Well, the fact is that the funding is in FY '18.
Yes.
Right? Mason Row, for, for what I'm looking at, is not even going to start construction in the next, I'll say, four years. So why would we be doing feasibility studies to move the library to Mason Row?
Why do we need to do due diligence?
Yes.
Because if we don't, the council may decide to turn down this current project and, and require us to do something different. And that really concerns us.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Oh, any, anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on these topics? All right, see, no hands? Go up.
I have some additional questions before we go to the motion.
Yes, go right ahead.
Cindy, on the infrastructures program, this is on the transportation section, the signals RS match local CNI equivalent, this is the 400,000 debt financed. This appears to be some match to the RS grant. Is this a one-for-one match that we need to be making?
Yeah, revenue sharing is a one-for-one match. And we have the advantage of using the $400,000 of debt that's matching the traffic signals and levers the 30% NVTA money. So when we get the NVTA money, it no longer needs a match, but to draw it down, we need the CNI equivalent, so...
I need a little help with this, so now I'm getting lost, a lot of acronyms.
Yeah. So, for the revenue sharing, that's the RS, that's a one-for-one, so when we go for the traffic signal money, and we use local money to match it, we can actually leverage that local money that matched the one grant to draw down the additional new state transportation money, which is the 30% pot of money, which is our local money that we can use for sidewalks and pedestrian improvements, and bus shelters, et cetera. So we kind of double the value of the 400,000. But that's also the money that council has not done a dedicated funding source so far, we've been using debt or pay-as-you-go one-time money each year to draw that down. So at some point, since we're out of pay-go, or we do more debt, we'll start losing the state transportation money, the 30%.
So, how are we raising the debt for the $400,000, then?
If it's approved in this CIP and adopted by council, we'll issue bonds for that 400,000. So that's been calculated.
Are those bonds separate from the other 7.8 million dollars worth of bonds we're issuing in this year? Is this all one big bond, or each issue, each bond is separate?
Usually, we do one big bond, and you get a dollar amount up to, and you say what projects, but it's not, it can be a selection of projects within that dollar amount, within what's appropriated. But also, anything in FY '16, we won't issue till the end of '16, so the debt hits in the out year, for cash flow.
So, so the bonds are written in a way that you say, "I want to raise 8.2 million dollars," and then these are the seven projects that we're going to be using those for?
Yep. So for example, City Hall was approved over three fiscal years, we did different bond issuances in each year with a group of money, but we never did City Hall all in the first year, because you wouldn't want to sit on that money till you got to that part of the project, in which case, that was good, because we've actually never executed it.
I thought this was...
So the debt, the debt for the general school fund is 7.8, and then transportation is an additional 400,000.
Right, I got it. Okay, so it matches one-for-one. The W and OD trail improvements, I have on chart 3.3 as 30,000, but on this 3.6, it looks like it's zero. It's 30,000 and zero, but it's now saying pay-as-you-go finance, I just confused on this last... That one's clear to me, but on the new spreadsheet, the last line says total pay-as-you-go financed. And I think... I think I just need to make sure we got the right numbers in the right places.
Okay, so which...
I'm looking at 3-6, the very last line, prior to this transportation subtotal.
For the FY '16, or the five-year total?
FY '16, correct.
I think I labeled and just got wrong. I think that where it says total pay-as-you-go financed...
I think you might be right, I just want to make sure, from Cindy. So, so this label, this total pay-as-you-go, should really say WNOD Trail Improvements Grant TBD.
Yep.
Okay, so, the... So what's the theory behind the, the $30,000 in the, in this fiscal year 2016? The other, is this because we don't have the staff to handle these projects, or...
Well, for the WNOD, they're all green, so they're only if there was money behind it, so this was to document the need as the request by CACT, but it's not being recommended to be funded, because I had no pay-go or any resources to apply to it. The first year was set up as 30,000 as a way to get the preliminary engineering and coordination with the WNOD in place, the WNOD with the Regional Park Authority in place, so the first year was low preliminary money, and then the out years was to build it for implementation.
And the, the 200,000, also requested by the CACT for the traffic calming, that's coming from water proceeds, do these funds roll over from year to year? I mean, once it's been denoted as this purpose, what...
It's proposed for one-time, $200,000 funding, but under the city charter, it carries over to the next year till the project's done. So, let's say we get one traffic calming done in FY '16, but another one is in process and not finalized, but we haven't used all 200,000, that money will carry over, it doesn't go back in the general fund as our operating budget would.
So it only carries over once the project has started?
Has started, or three years hasn't elapsed. So in the CIP, per our charter, once you start spending the money, it definitely carries over, you have up to three years to start spending it, if not, it has to be re-appropriated. But once you draw down the first dollar amount, it's good, unless you let it sit for three years again. Sometimes that helps with your planning money, where you're using some other force, source of funding to plan it, and then it takes you a year or two to start spending it.
So, having been part of many of these traffic calming cases, they often don't cost $200,000, they're much less expensive, so if you had started even one traffic calming case in fiscal year 2016, you now still have access to the rest of the $200,000.
It lifts to a zero balance.
So you're essentially guaranteeing traffic calming to have $200,000 for the next three years?
Unless it's used up prior, and given the number of cases pending, currently, the potential would be to use it up prior.
But, and if you use it continually over those three years, it doesn't expire, it's just if you stop using it for three years in a row.
Correct.
If you chip away at it, it goes, not that it's going to get us more than two years.
It doesn't allow for a three-year lapse.
Well, they're asking for 200,000 per year, I understand that it's only really funded for this year, that's, that's the money that you can count on, but the other ones, I mean, they're asking for a million dollars, and the reason I bring this up, these traffic calming things are usually not $200,000, and I was, when you're using waterfront fund proceeds, to me, the WNOD trail improvements, what we are calling even in this document, a great street of the city, to me, should receive some portion of that. I mean, we're moving dollars around a little bit, and I'm not sure where the CACT is, how they're recommending, nothing on, or I shouldn't say nothing, only to-be-determined funds for the WNOD trail versus these traffic calming. And the traffic calming, they're important, I mean, I've sat through many, many of them, but a lot of them are perception issues, and a little adjustment here, you know, we're not big on the speed bumps, but we're, you know, curb bump outs and other measures, and we can be a little bit more creative if you have a little bit more money, but to me, these waterfront proceeds are...
Special.
They're special, and the WNOD trail, to me, is more special than is the...
More permanent than just...
Yeah, than traffic calming. The traffic calming frequently runs into a problem where it has lack of funding, that is a major problem, the community comes before the CACT and says, "We have this big problem, and we come up with a solution," and then we say we have no money to do it. It just seems to be this ratio of 200,000 for the traffic calming versus nothing guaranteed for the WNOD trail. I don't like that breakout, honestly.
You know, I, I agree with you, except I think the issue I see is, suppose we move 30,000 and make that blue that first year for planning, but the amounts asked for in the out years, I mean, even if we did the planning, but we don't have the money in the out years to actually do anything, then I'm not, it's not going to do us any good. Where the 200,000, yeah, you, you may not need, you could maybe have to do five or six neighborhood traffic calming out of that over three years, or at least you have the opportunity to do it. I think that's my problem. I agree with you, but I don't think 200,000's enough, even if we moved the whole thing, I don't think it's enough to do that much on that WNOD, based on the reports. There was a couple, several different presentations, and it seemed like what wants to be done with these plazas and things is going to take a lot more money.
Yeah, it's proposed for about 900,000, you'll notice on the WNOD, there's two lines, one line would be a local match, and the idea would be that that, we could go after a grant and leverage it, and not knowing what grant we were going at, staff did it for a one-to-one relation, ratio, sometimes it's an eight, you know, 80 to 20%, we don't know, but we went conservatively.
So if you were to ask, so if you were to ask me, which is, has more importance to, to me, and maybe not to the CACT, but this is saying that a million dollars is necessary for traffic calming measures, and only roughly a million dollars, 900 and some 1,000, is WNOD. To me, they're not, they're not equivalent, I think the WNOD is one of our great streets, we, it's the term we use in this book, and that those two would get the same funding, and the traffic calming actually gets the immediate priority. That's why my first question was, is this, are we not doing anything because of staff issues, or we don't have time to take on another great street project, or something like that?
Part of it would be, part of it would be staffing, that's not in the, the big sheet layout of, you know, projects, and so if we inject a new transportation project, we would have to reassess where that impacts. Part of the WNOD could be that Nova Parks would do a lot of the legwork for us. To be clear, though, I do want you to know, the CACT recommended both, so in their formal report to council, they recommended both the neighborhood traffic calming and the WNOD. Originally, they were all green, and they were in the CIP, but there was no recommendation for any funding, in working the final pieces with the city manager, we elected to put some money towards, water sale monies, towards the neighborhood traffic calming, because of the safety issues, and we have five open applications submitted from neighborhoods. It wasn't to say WNOD wasn't important, it was just, we knew we had open neighborhood petitions that we weren't addressing.
What happened to the West Street sidewalk WNOD?
Money.
Money plan?
The, the grant money still exists, and we have some time, a couple years before we lose it, and so it's currently on hold, because it, the grant money is not sufficient to do the West Street project, and we need more time to do community work, because we definitely had difference of opinions on how little or how much to do, what to do with the new sidewalk, there was no money to replace or fix the existing sidewalk, and it's in pretty bad shape and not ADA accessible, so if you went to do the street, why would you put in a new without fixing the existing? And so, with that information, other grants and resources, we put that one on hold till we can reassess one, what might happen with Mason Row and the Grove and West piece, and then come back and try to...
But that started kind of here, as the WNOD. You know, our issue was the WNOD, and then it somehow left here, and it moved several blocks away, up West Street, and that's where there became discord. I think there was agreement and harmony, and love all the way around, until...
It was partly the grant funding, so the grant, and it was, we used to go for grants, and then do the community input in the planning process, and what we're trying to do is do the CIP process with you all in the community first, and then go for grants or allocate the grants.
Will I ask...
But the Safe Routes to School money was specifically allocated to get safe walking to Mount Daniel and up Oak Street, and so it couldn't be dedicated to the WNOD.
But I, I think I would agree to disagree, that I think that the WNOD is part of the Safe Routes to School, and is, I guess where I would maybe take up what Russ is saying, is there, is it possible for us to revisit some of these issues as it relates specifically to the WNOD?
Yes.
Not to Oak Street, not to...
It was a different funding source, because the grant in the scope was very written for sidewalks and intersections to Oak and Mount Daniel. You can revisit WNOD.
Well, no pun intended, but it seems to me there's an intersection, maybe, of some of these different programs, associated with really what is the Great Street, which is the WNOD.
I think that would be true, because we have applied, some of the revenue sharing grant for traffic signals is at West and Great Falls and West and Lincoln, which helps with people getting to and from the WNOD and to and from Mount Daniel. There's not enough money to do all the sidewalk piece, and then do you fund, part of this WNOD would improve that intersection there. So I think there is an intersection of them all, just constrained by grant requirements and staff resources. Now, if the planning commission wanted to, let's say, fund the 406... let's say, fund the 465, which is our proposed local match, there is no capital reserves or pay-go from which to choose it, suck that from. There is still 5.1 million unallocated water sale proceeds that is sort of, we spent half and put half on hold, but that was a staff decision so that some money could be used now and some could be later. You know, as more plans and things evolved and flushed out. It doesn't preclude you from changing that split if you chose to fund more.
Well, I've stolen Russ's thunder and I didn't mean to. I just, we, it was frustrating to me. And I was thinking about it this fall and it sort of got away from me. You know, 18 months ago, we were really determined to fix that part of the W N O D trail over West Street. And we had a lot of energy and there was a lot of momentum for that. And then it sort of left us. And here we are.
I think added to that was the redevelopment with Mason Row and what the developer did versus us.
I can only speak for myself. I think we were not ever believing that that was going to solve our problems and that that was ever going to happen in the next manageable period of time. And that's not because we're seers of the future. It just, it was just, there was so, I mean, it was hard to believe that that was going to help us.
Well, what I'm thinking too is that we ran into some problems with the regional park authority. Is that true? They hadn't made it their mind as to what they wanted to do with the W N O D trail there?
I think that was part of it and probably even a stronger issue is they have nothing in their CIP to do anything there. So, you know, willing to pursue it, but somebody needed to come up with the funding. So, I mean, there's certainly some challenges there for how you design it and dealing with the utility easements with Dominion and, you know, having to sort all that out. I think the Nova Parks is still willing to work with us.
Although we did that with West End Park. I mean, that was, those problems were all solved with West End Park.
They're solved all.
So, well, so that particular grant started at the W N O D when it was here. It became Great Falls and Oak. So maybe this is a way to kind of tackle that as a serious issue again, which it seems to me has some traffic calming, although I'm not exactly sure. But...
Well, look, the year, this year is not, it's not essential that the W N O D trail get its attention. But when I look in the out-years, it doesn't receive any money back then either. So I commented Cindy on this spreadsheet earlier and it really is so much more helpful to me looking at it in this format than in the other.
Right, right.
And the reason is because it sort of highlights things, just in the way I visually look at it. You know, when you look at the waterfront proceeds column, and I just, I went down every single item, every project that we're going to spend money on. And I think these are all reasonable uses for this special money, as I deem it. Except there's this glaring, to me, hole in the W N O D. To me, that is a require, a part of the city that is so used is such a part of Falls Church. So many people pass through it. It's highly used. And when you allocate those waterfront proceeds, all of these are legitimate. Obviously, the public parking structure, I'm a huge fan of that. I've been saying for years we need to invest in infrastructure and parking in this city. I'm a big fan of that one. The stuff for the parks is the vast majority. To me, that is good use of the water proceeds. I mean, the vast majority of those projects are happening in the parks and those are things that last a long time. Those are things that the city benefits for huge durations of time based on this one-time sale. And then you get to the downtown reinvestment, great project for using those kind of funds. 20,000 is just a match later on. And then finally gets to 200,000 for traffic calming. And I just feel like there's something missing and we're going to run out of those, we're going to run out of those funds very quickly. And I would like to see some of those go to the W N O D.
How much are you suggesting we move? And I'm assuming there isn't additional water funds. So if we're going to move money, we have to move from another pot in here.
Now, there is, if you look at page 3-4, the bottom line, there's 5.1 for 854. So 5.1...
But I thought that was like more like long-term money that we were kind of going to vision over the next, over time.
You could. It's, you know, 11.3 is the water sale proceeds the council has allocated to capital. Once you take off the immediate 15%, it's just set aside for capital with no specific designation other than the ordinance specifically said it would be deliberated and allocated through the CIP process.
So let's suppose...
So you could allocate more from that 5.1 if you so directed.
So let's suppose that we go ahead and allocate the 30 in two local matches in 17, 18.
Let me be clear. Let me be clear. It doesn't have to be in 2016. I'm not suggesting we need to move those dollars around. But we have a CIP where we have multiple placeholders. That the W N O D trail doesn't have a placeholder to me is not, we're talking a five-year timeframe.
But these are placeholders. So that's why they're in green as a placeholder.
Well, the traffic calming does have a placeholder for four more years. They only get the 200,000 in the first year.
Right.
They only get the 200,000. I mean, I...
W N O D?
Make a motion to move some of that money into the...
It doesn't have to come, so the 200,000 is this year.
Right.
That we don't, we have money in, what my motion would be, and I don't have an amount, maybe it's 200,000, is for the W N O D trail in one of these out-years. It doesn't matter to me that it's this year, but I would like to see some real dollars go to that great street.
Well, it sounded like, from what Cindy was saying, is that they want 30,000 in the first year of having it because they want to do planning. And also probably they need to look at the grants and they need to figure out what they're going to do with this money. So, I mean, are you talking about taking the 30,000 and shifting that to 17 or 18 and then put that in and then a subsequent year?
If it's in, if it's in green, if it's in green, it doesn't mean much to me. That's what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I think these are here as we've, these are here as placeholders to tell us this is important. We really should try to find funding for it.
What would you propose?
Yeah, what would you like to do?
Okay, but could I come back and ask clarifying questions to Cindy? So there's nothing in any of the transportation grants that we could come back and cover the traffic calming with?
No.
So in the verbiage and all the grants, there's nothing that we can move?
Most of the grants aren't, won't work or aren't allowed to be used in residential districts. They need to be on your feeder roads or your prime commercial. And most of the traffic calming is obviously in your neighborhood roads.
And residential.
I do want to, if I call your attention to project sheet H-17, staff had outlined what projects they would do for the W N O D. FY16 was designed for Walter Mess Plaza and adjacent crossing and then construction the year after. And then a second plaza, third and fourth plaza and fifth plaza. They haven't specifically called out the crossing of the W N O D at West, but that would possibly be one of the other plaza intersections.
So I think we have two approaches here. We either move money from another source or we suggest that we pull money from the additional water fund that's remaining, the 5.3 million. And, but, and I don't disagree. I think the W N O D is really important. I think that, you know, I've seen C A C T do the presentation twice on what they'd like to do and I think the enhancements would be great. I mean, if you look at our section of W N O D against parts of Arlington and, you know, even in Percyville out in the middle of nowhere, they've done much more with their trail.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I totally agree with you. I guess the question we have is, I kind of feel like we need to leave that 200,000 for neighborhood traffic calming because they're unlikely to get money in those out-years anyway. And that 200,000 they can use for a few years. So I would suggest if we're going to do anything that we, that we make a motion to pull some of the money from the 5.3 for long-term work on the W N O D. Maybe not in 16, maybe starting in 17 or 18. I think there's also like the staffing issue. There's a staffing issue here in these projects because we already have a lot of projects on our plate. So maybe they would have, they should be pushed out anyway just from a staffing point of view.
If you elect to put some water sale proceeds, I would request you consider multiple years or dollar amounts so that we, you were messaging that we should go for grants and match them. Because if you just do one or two years and haven't committed to the match, then it would be, either the other money could be used up or when we go to get it, there won't be grant money. But the timing of staff resources is important.
There's something else that I'm kind of concerned about. The traffic calming is important, but when you, Russ was putting, pointing out that there are so many other places where the water fund is being actually used for something that's tangible, that you could say, eh, we spent a whole lot of money there, even if, you know, on the track, on the field. You know, there's a whole lot of those different things in parks. Traffic calming is for individual neighborhoods. One of the premises of using the waterfront money, as I understood it, was to use it for something significant for the entire city. And I think that's something that is really quite important. And I'm glad you caught that, that 200,000, because that is, it's important, but it's not important to the whole city. It's important to those neighborhoods.
I would like to move that, this is not a formal motion. I would like that we would move some money from the waterfront proceeds, part of the blue column into the W N O D trail improvements. The timing is not as important to me, but I think that knowing that there's money there to improve one of the great streets of the city to me is very important.
Are you talking about moving money from one of these other projects? Or moving new money?
Additional money.
Additional money, okay.
That indicates that this is a, it's a priority to me. If it's not shared by the board, that's, the commission, that's fine.
So Russ, I have a quick question for you.
We agree.
Yeah, we agree. We need to know what the structure of the move is.
And I need really Cindy's help on that. She said multiple, to me, I was thinking 200,000, which was similar to the traffic calming. But if you want it in multiple years, it's fine.
I guess what I was thinking is maybe move the 30,000 to 17, fund it and maybe two of the 90,000s in 18, 19. And just do the local match line because we still want to try to find some grant.
I think you're going to have trouble pulling the money out of the reserve fund once it gets in there. And I think that if you want to put, if you want to put 2,000 into, or 200,000 into the trail improvements, then you need to do it for this coming year. Because one, you know, okay.
Just do it.
Take it and put it in there and then you have your three years to work on it.
Just do it.
You know, another thing is is that we are concentrating on improving our whole downtown area. And that is a linkage to downtown area. But I, I just trying to see where else we could get 200,000 for a traffic calming.
We have a staff person over here shaking his head. I'm curious as to why. Because you think we're going on too long about this? Because you think traffic, traffic calming is more important? Or do you think it's, we're just being impractical? I mean, let's have a little input here.
Come up, Mike. And I would note that council is looking at the neighborhood traffic calming tonight to adopt. And so I have Paul's staff report. And so if the commission wants, I could talk about what applications are pending and type of situations, but...
The notion of adding 200,000 to a project this year strikes me too, is it not on? Sorry, it looked like it was on. Strikes, two, there are a couple of things that stand out to me about that. First is what projects does staff not do then? We, we can barely tackle what's in the CIP right now. It's very ambitious. I'm not sure we can tackle what's in the CIP right now. So that would be the first question. The second is just putting 200,000 in there to do what? Something on the W N O D?
Just a drop in the bucket, right?
Well, it's not even necessarily a drop in the bucket, but there are a number, there are a large number of proposals and ideas out there to improve the W N O D. And, you know, a lot of them are very good ideas. But what we think, what I think is the best one, and may not be what Cindy thinks is the best one and Paul thinks is the best one and so on. And then lastly, although Mr. Wadiski, you articulate a very good point about the importance of the W N O D trail. And my personal opinions notwithstanding, the fact is the neighborhood traffic calming, C A C T just went through a long intensive process to update that plan because it is such, such an intimate, there's such a visceral plan that we hear all the time from people. All the time we get requests. We need to do this, need to do that, need to, yeah, for traffic calming, that we can't address. Fair or not and representative or not, we rarely get those requests about the W N O D. And again, that's not to express my opinions or values between the two programs, but that's what we deal with. So that's kind of my, my...
Yeah, I think regardless of what we do with the trail, we've got to leave the money in for the traffic calming for this coming year. I mean, to me, if you wanted to do, because I'm with Mike, I'm not a big fan of us here with just dollar amounts creating plans by plopping 200,000 dollars this year, next year. So somebody thought up these numbers in here, 30, 90, 90, 180, 75, comes up to 465. To me, if you wanted to turn that entire row blue, maybe do that. Turn the next three years of that blue, maybe do that. But to me, and I know, understand Ruth thinks that anything that's blue that's not this year, including, I guess, our parking deck isn't going to, isn't going to happen, then maybe you don't want to do that. But I like taking plans and trying to implement them, since somebody made these plans, versus us trying to change plans just by moving money around.
I think if you message the water sale proceeds across this project and adopted it, and we send it to council that way, that would be messaging to use it. I think it is true that if it stays in the water fund in the future, because there's going to be a lot of pressing needs, it may be hard to get it out for a smaller project.
It's not addressed here.
If you would turn to tab eight, page eight dash 17, you will see the description of how our transportation staff, and Paul's daughter in particular, laid out the projects for the five phases, and that was based on the C A C T's work with their plan. I think this is a project that is not in the C I P as currently laid out for transportation projects. So Mike raises a very good point. And if Nova Park doesn't take the lead, and they would not be 100% of the lead, we'd still be involved. Something else, we'll have to assess and see what gives.
And that's why I was wondering if it, if we were going to do this, if it made sense to move it a year or two out.
And you could certainly do that. The C A C T wants to move it forward, it's just a policy decision.
Right. And that's a, it's a very articulate plan. I would just say, and not to be difficult, because you were very articulate in what you said, seems to me the C I P exercises a lot of funding things. We use the term placeholders with plans that are, let's just say, not always fully formed. That's the exercise we go through in this. So there's many things that are sort of not baked yet. I will say, as it relates to W O D and West Street, that that came up 15 years ago, when we were working on the West End Park, which is now under construction. How things take so long, I don't know. But I mean, there was a plan afoot in, you know, 2002, in order to try to straighten that trail, and here we all are. So I, I don't know that it's entirely fair to suggest, like, we just have no idea what we do with the money, because I think we have some good ideas that have been around a long time.
Well, there's also a project proposed on page eight, 17, for 900,000 dollars.
And the C A C T has done several presentations of that project. One at a V E P S meeting a while back. And so they've been looking at this a long time and thinking about it hard, but, but, yeah, but I.
Well.
Welcome.
I would also say, as it relates, I, I think we have, generally speaking, and I would defer to Paul on this, but I think we have sort of, as at least related to this thing with making West Street normal. You know, we've sort of decided that we're not waiting for the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, because we'll be, I mean, we'll be, you know, another 15 years will go by. And I think that in the other jurisdictions where work has been done on the trail, they have not waited.
Right, right.
For the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. And I, I don't know that we've ever thought we'd get anything from them. I mean that in a nice way.
Yes, because they have been a good partner and put a lot of money into the Tanner Hill Historic Site. So they have brought money to the table in the City of Falls Church.
Well, Russ, what would, what would you think if we asked for some money to be put in?
I think.
In, in out years, not necessarily water proceeds money, but money that could then take water proceeds, or some water proceeds funds. I mean, we might be able to make a case for that.
I'm not sure I understand how, like, when you said, you know, other money, what have we done about?
I think it has to be water proceeds, because we can't play anything else.
There's no other money.
We can't repay as you go.
Well, wait a minute, we've got pink in here.
Oh.
But that's.
Well, we have had other.
The equivalent of pink, pretty much.
I mean, green.
I was going to that Safe Roots to School, Ruth.
We were talking about taking some of the remaining water funds and putting some of it to the W O N D trail improvements. Because it's important to, this is, you know, like, we've been talking about the W O N D being a great street, like we just did on the community meeting on Saturday. So Russ made a good point that, looking at all the things we're doing in blue, that the W O N D trail improvements deserve to be funded. And so we're thinking about requesting that some additional money be pulled from the water fund, you know, money, and put in this. But I question if we should do it in the 16 year, because I don't think staff has the availability to start this project. So we're thinking, like, would it be 17 or 18? And, I mean, how do you feel?
Well, and what we were also.
And yet it goes back to staff.
What we were also asking about was this Safe Roots to School grant money. How these could not be sort of mixed in. Perhaps not in 2016, but in 2017. So maybe the answer is you need planning money to try to tap into the Safe Roots to School. And it's also connected to the W N O D trail.
Sure.
Yeah, and as, as you get ready to answer that, we did talk a lot about Safe Roots to School and not being adequate to do the whole plan and a lot more community work. We've also been, from a policy direction, focused on commercial corridors and not residential, minus neighborhood traffic calming, safety issues, and any grant limitations. So there's complexities here and workload.
Sure. So first to the W N O D trail projects. I, I, I think, and I can't remember exactly how it played out in the funding documents, but there is that, that color reserved for only if other funding's available.
Green, right, right, it's green.
I said it's all green.
In.
Green is one step off from pink.
Well, especially in the transportation projects, that's a really good color, because there are lots of grant opportunities available for transportation projects. So, for example, there's the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program, which the city had just applied, just applied for, for the first time for some Park Avenue projects, is a W N O D trail, there we go. So we are in green. And so there's the, the federal tap funds that are available exactly for projects like this. That was recently blended with the Safe Routes to School program. And those things are all operating on an 80-20 match, 80% federal, 20% local. And that 20% local doesn't have to be local tax dollars. That just has to be some local contribution, so it could be a developer contribution. So if we had in here this program, sort of as it is in its draft form, saying there's going to be so many hundreds of thousands of dollars going to the W N O D trail, if that local match is coming from a developer contribution, that's an okay thing. That satisfies the grant requirements. And so having it in the C I P for the future years is really important, because it gives you a place to leverage those, the developer contributions as they're coming in.
Paul, let me say, it's, the discussion is not about, should there be dollars there? Are these enough dollars? What, what you have put in here, or the, or Cindy's put in here, is roughly a million dollars worth of W N O D.
It's based on your project sheet, if you need it.
Improvements. What I'm actually suggesting is taking it one step further and saying, these are important. They're important enough to me, that I think they should get a different color, a blue. Blue meaning we actually fund it for sure. So it's not, the argument isn't, do we need the money? I think we really need the money. And I think it's equally as important as traffic calming. And I believe it is, also meets the general perception and what I, my own personal requirements for water fund proceeds. To me, this is a great street of Falls Church and should require some funding, some spending, not a, I hope we get a grant for it in the future. What I'm not suggesting is that we reduce this million dollars by one penny. I think every dollar we can get from grants would be fantastic. What I want to know is what we could do with money if we had it in blue and guaranteed from the water fund proceeds. With the understanding, as we went through with the traffic calming, that if you spend even one dollar, or a small project, because there is some staffing concerns in 2016, that you can use that money over a three-year period. So if there are staffing problems, hopefully there is some ability to get one or two things done, so that that money can carry over. So if, if you had, and I was throwing around 210,000 dollars, my own brain, which is the first three years you have in green here, 30,000, 90,000, and 90,000. If those were in blue, we could guarantee that, those funding, that would essentially give us the better part of six years of funding for, of guaranteed funding of 210,000. Not a lot, but it's roughly 20% of what you're asking for, for all these projects. Would that be of assistance?
Yes. If you look at, we had, already the city's been sort of pursuing avenues available to it to sort of further the project. And so the Nova Parks, formerly N V R P A, they're changing their branding, actually, with their own dollars, hired Walter Phillips to do some preliminary engineering and cost estimates for two of the plazas along the trail, as well as the crossings adjacent. And I believe that, taking into account sort of the materials, the construction times, staffing costs to oversee it, I think they came up with an estimate of about $100,000 a plaza, if I remember. But I think 100,000 isn't about the right ballpark. So committing 200,000 dollars would allow you to get approximately two of the five plazas completed. And what they had been looking at specifically were the plazas, the Veterans, Veterans Common, which is at the crossing at Little Falls. And certainly, we would be looking for Arlington to partner with us on that, because most of the plaza is actually in Arlington County. And then also at the Walter Mess Plaza, which is the crossing with Oak Street, next to the American Legion.
So you asked earlier what I would propose. It would be that I turn, that we turn the 2016, 17, and 18 to water fund proceeds. That was 210,000. That would be my, like, proposal for discussion.
Keeping them in the three fiscal years or all in F Y 16?
I would spread it out. I think there's real staffing problems, I think that's legitimate. There's a lot of projects on the plate. But, I mean, I just, to put this in perspective, the W N O D trail, we're saying is a great street. By my preliminary math, we are going to be spending in 2016, 36% of all of our money on H V A C units. So I think the, the dollars are properly appropriated to the W N O D trail.
Well, I just wish they'd fish the one here.
That's pretty good.
Don't laugh if you're hearing the cold of winter or the heat of summer.
That's what I just said, I wish they'd do it in here.
Okay.
So I've highlighted on the screen the W N O D local match. And the three areas, based on Russ's proposal, would go blue. I would deduct that 210 from the water sale proceeds, and so it'd be 5 million. And then staff would know there's match money or things to work with Nova Parks, and hopefully they do most of the project management.
Well, but that's grant money, if you just need 20%.
Well, that would, that would match the grants.
What's happening in 30?
It's.
It'd be blue.
Blue.
Ms. John, do you have any comments on this one?
You're happy?
These would be blue, and then staff would have money to run these grants.
Answered, okay.
I mean, that's certainly consistent with the, with what the C A C T has been asking for. And so, right, I'm speaking with a lot of hats here, so it's difficult to say one thing or the other.
And we don't know if that will, you know, if city council will go along with that. But I think it, it seems to me it's the consensus of the commission, that we would like to at least. Propose that.
Yeah, I, as the C A C T's liaison, this is certainly something that they've been looking for. As, as the Parks for People chapter was just adopted, this is certainly consistent with that just-adopted comp plan chapter. It's consistent with the Mobility for All Modes chapter. The, the only hesitation I have is how does it play out with all the other numbers?
But I also think, like, if, if you do find grant, get grants, and you do have money in there that you could use for match, and if you're able to get an 80-20 grant, then you have a lot more leverage.
Yeah, absolutely. It's important to have, I, I think of sort of public dollars as sort of the seed dollars to get the ball rolling. Whether it's making sure we have the right staff on hand to actually apply for grants, whether we can actually sort of legitimately apply for them, whether we can leverage them when they come in, whether we can look for partnering opportunities, if we're willing to go in. Maybe it's not sort of an official grant program, but maybe V E P S is willing to come in with some funds, or the Friends of the W N O D. So this is a great way to show, the city's into this. They're willing to put some dollars on the table, who else is willing to buy in, if we're looking for leverage opportunities.
Okay. So I'll move.
Good job, Russ. Okay.
Exhausting, but a good job.
Just 40 minutes.
All right. So we will, if the rest of the, yeah, his questions, he said were answered. I've already asked him. If everyone is, is okay with that, we'll move on to the motion. And then if there's further discussion, we can do it after that.
And as you.
Oh, and I'd like to close the, close the meeting to the public right now.
And as you were doing that, Chair, I was modifying on the screen the attachment form motions.
Yes.
Based on earlier conversations.
Melissa has.
Yeah, I actually wrote almost the same thing, so.
So motion one would include the schools, based on the changes presented tonight after speaking to the superintendents. You don't need to exclude that and have a second motion. And then the, specifically, the amendment today at the 23rd would be the W N O D local match for a total of 210,000 with, in fiscal years 16, 17, and 18.
Good.
And then you would need to discuss if you can concur with what would now be motion two and three.
Okay. Are you guys ready for motion?
Are we ready for the motion? Okay.
Yes, that's the approval motion recommended by staff. The other two are a modification or a denial.
So I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve pursuant to Section 6 dot 19 of the City Charter and Section 17 dot 08 of the City Code, the F Y 2016, 2020 C I P as presented on February 2nd, 2015, and amended on February 17th and 23rd, 2015, as summarized on C I P notebook pages 3 dash 1, 3 dash 2, 3 dash 3, 3 dash 4, 3 dash 5, 3 dash 6, and 3 dash 7, with the modification of amending the W O N D local match total for 2,010,000 with 30,000, 90,000, 90,000, F Y 16, 17, and 18, with changing the funding to water fund from, what was it? Oh, only of grant revenue offset.
Yep, we do need to note the water sale proceeds. Okay, is there any further discussion on that motion?
Can I make some just general comments?
Yes, you may.
Since Paul is here, I first want to say thank you, to you, looking at this, of our entire budget, 22% or almost 23% of this is funded by grants and all in the transportation area. That's, I think, phenomenal job of getting those grants and appropriating them the way we need. That's a huge amount of money that we're not going to have to spend in the city, so thank you very much on that.
If I could jump in, I, I want to make sure I'm not taking all the credit. Certainly, I've, I've been responsible for some of that money, but some of it was also due to my predecessor in the position, Wendy Blox Sanford.
Agreed, I.
Yeah, we, we know and love Wendy.
The other comment I want to make is.
And the rest of city staff.
Oh, we love them.
Very modest.
I think I was here for that F T A federal grant.
I'm also glad to see that we're finally going to do this work on the City Hall. We've been talking about this for almost as long as I've been on the planning commission, so I'm glad it's actually getting funded for this year. This is all, of course, if council approves this. I'm very happy to see that the library is going to get its money after last year's setback. I think the project that we saw is really a good use of funds, and the budget is very reasonable for what, what needs to happen in that building. And, and overall, I just think the amount that we're funding through debt has gone down tremendously. We're only at about 59%. So that's an improvement over the last years that we've seen. I'm still very worried about the school massive 104 million dollar placeholder. But otherwise, I think the C I P has been really terrific and well put together, Cindy, so thank you very much.
You know, not only well put together, but we've got a couple of new things in there. I mean, that, that is in itself a hurrah.
Oh, and the parking garage, we're finally investing in that.
Parking garage and money for the W N O D. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we haven't had anything new forever.
Well, I'd like to commend Cindy, Cindy for reaching out to the public the way she has. We talked about it about a year ago, and, and she really took a huge step and did all of the things that we had discussed in general. And, and they all came to fruition, and we got some great feedback from, from the citizens. And there were some lessons learned from our survey, but I think we've learned them, and next year will be better. And, and hopefully we'll get the same amount of feedback, or even more. So thank you, Cindy. Great job on this.
My pleasure. Absolutely.
Any other? Madam Chair? Yes. The amended motion that Ms. Teach made, was that seconded? And if so.
I seconded.
Thank you. All right, if we're all in agreement, I'd like to call the roll, Ms. J, please.
And we're voting on motion one?
We're motion one.
Just one.
Ms. Huckenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Dujon?
Yes.
And then you had two other options that I recommended.
Yes, we do. We have a couple of other motions that we'd like to make.
Do we make the second one?
Yes.
So this is our motion two. I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council support the commission's preference and clear recommendation, after considering all design alternatives, infrastructure priority pressures, financial affordability, and the new task force recommendation that the adopted City Hall Public Safety projects proceed immediately with project implementation as described under Tab 6 of the C I P notebook, to include the four add-on projects.
I'll be happy to second that also.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we approved motion two. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
I'll just make a quick comment, just because I was on the new task force, which included a lot of people from the old task force.
Yeah, I was on the old one.
We've had multiple task force trying to find the best way to take the City Hall that we have and make it very usable. And, and really, more friendly to citizens. And I will say, as someone who, you know, spends a lot of time at City Hall and the community center, I meet so many people in the parking lot who ask me, how do I get here? And sometimes I have to explain very convoluted way to get there. And so I think that these, you know, these improvements, by being able to not just do the additions, but to also redirect some of the flow and have better corridors and use the space in a better way, is just really, really important, not just for the people who work in City Hall, but the people who need to come and use the resources at City Hall. And, you know, I, I know people who don't like to go to public meetings here, because they just feel like they can't find the dogwood room, for one thing. And, and they're uncomfortable, because they have to come through the police station entrance. And, and so to make it so that people feel more comfortable to come to our public meetings, I think is really, really important.
Accessibility.
Yeah.
Any further comments? Okay, well, Ms. J, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Dujon?
Yes.
Ms. Huckenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks? Oh, I'm sorry. You don't get two votes, sorry.
He doesn't get two votes.
That will help me on next year's report.
You overwhelmingly voted it. Motion two passes unanimously.
Okay. Are we ready for motion three?
We are.
Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council support the commission's clear recommendation that council establish a dedicated and sustainable funding source to properly set aside assigned capital reserve funds for facility and equipment replacement, rotational replacement, and renovations to prevent future fiscal pressures of all infrastructure requiring funding at the same time.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion three has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on motion three?
Yeah, I'd like to make one on this one. I remember a long time ago when I first was elected to city council, and I was, and talking with Dan McKeever, the city manager at that time, and I said, what is our process for ongoing maintenance of our buildings, ongoing thinking ahead of what we need to do to all of our buildings? And, and I think that this is long overdue. This needs to be done with an eye to the future, and I think it's so valuable to the city, because just so many things just get put from one budget to another and eliminate it, and then there's a big problem. You get bigger and bigger problems with not keeping up with the needs of our infrastructure.
Thank you, Lyndy. Anything further?
I just want to say briefly, I agree with Lyndy in that I think, right now, we're in a pretty tough spot, that we need to try to avoid 10, 20, 30, 40 years from now, which I think means planning ahead.
Good.
I'll just repeat my statistic, we're spending 37% of our budget on HVAC this year.
Why isn't it warmer in here then?
It might get warmer one day. Okay, I'd like to call the roll on motion number three, please. Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commission, thank you very much for the time and details.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
I mean, Cindy, this is just wonderful. This was very, very good this year.
Yeah, it is. Thank you so much, Ms. Messer.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Jones for your compromise on the school spending, or school, whatever it's called, the pink. We're calling it the pink.
Allocation.
Allocation. We have no new business or no other business, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes for February 17. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions? Melissa? No? Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Okay, I do, I have.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I think the comment was, well, that's, that's minor, but I think the comment was, it's not after each football season that the field is unusual. I think it's after the 2014-15 football season that, I don't think he said it that way, but he didn't mean after each-
Not after each.
Yeah.
I think they're saying it's after the current football season.
Yeah, after the current, current season.
Yeah, after the current season.
That's a good way to put current.
And also, on line, on line 200 and 201, it says that a presentation of the proposal was made to the Economic Development Committee. I don't think that's the case. I think, I think it's going to be, I don't think they've made a formal proposal to anybody yet.
Actually, I think he, he said that they had had a staff presentation.
No.
No. Okay.
It's been to all of them.
You know what, no, he said that they had recently come and did a presentation to staff and was planning, I believe, to go to the EDC.